-twenty-three.
I'll move to suspend the rules on requiring three readings on ordinance twenty days twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance twenty days twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. Let's move on to item seventeen. Second reading of ordinance number twenty dash twenty-four.
Ordinance number twenty dash twenty-four, an ordinance supplementing the 2020 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for parkland and trailway development improvements.
Thank you. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor, council members. In the 2019 capital improvement plan that was adopted last year, there were two projects for the Parks Department, one being design cost services for the Delaware Run project, as well as an additional hundred thousand dollars for park improvements to the Ross Street Park. These appropriations totaling one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars were not included in the 2020 adopted budget, and as an update to the CIP, we're bringing these two items for council consideration. The appropriations would come, the park im-
Just to elaborate on the trail project, this is really a feasibility study to see if we can get under the railroad tracks. That's a critical link regardless of how, what the length of the Delaware Run project. Initially, we want to be able to just at least connect our Blue Limestone Park with the golf course. We can't do that if we can't get under the railroad tracks. So that's the, this is just a feasibility study. We would come back to city council depending on if that feasibility study says we can, that is feasible to get under the railroad tracks, we would come back to you for further authorization for that project. This just authorizes that. This does not authorize the construction of the Delaware Run bike path. This is just the, can we look, is the first link feasible?
Are there any questions for Tom or Justin on this one? Justin, I think Tom cut you off. Were you done, or I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I have no other comments.
Okay, just making sure. All right, what is, what is the wish of council on this?
Move for approval, or sorry, I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three-
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Farrell, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
And I'll move for approval of ordinance twenty dash twenty-four.
By Mr. Farrell, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we're going to move back up to items, if you'll read item nine, ten, eleven, and twelve into the record. And if you read them slowly, we can get to seven thirty.
Understood. Ordinance number twenty dash ten, an ordinance approving a rezoning amendment for Terra Alta LLC for Terra Alta subdivision from A1 and R2 PMU to A1 and approximately four hundred and seventy-two point nine acres and located north of Braumiller Road, east of Pollock Road, and west of Berlin Station Road. There's no zoning changes to the Stockdale Farms portion of the development. Ordinance number twenty dash eleven, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for Terra Alta LLC allowing the placement of a planned mixed use overlay district Terra Alta subdivision on approximately four hundred and seventy-two point nine acres zoned A1 and R2 PMU and located north of Millen Road. Road. Back, are you hearing me?
We are, but somebody needs to mute their microphone.
An ordinance number twenty dash twelve, an ordinance approving an amended preliminary development plan for Terra Alta LLC for Terra subdivision on approximately four hundred and seventy-two point nine acres on properties zoned A1 and R2 PMU located north of Braumiller Road, east of Pollock Road, and west of Berlin Station Road. An ordinance number twenty dash thirteen, an ordinance approving an amended preliminary subdivision plat for Terra Alta LLC for Terra Alta subdivision on approximately four hundred and seventy-two point nine acres on properties zoned E1 and R2 PMU and located north of Braumiller Road, east of Pollock Road, and west of Berlin Station Road.
Jeff, can you mute your microphone?
Sure.
Thank you. Elaine, you read, you didn't read them all yet.
I did.
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay. I was worried about that microphone.
I can reread if you prefer.
No, there was just a few things that cut out, but I've got it in front of me. As long as everybody else is good to, so Dave, do you want to start with this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Let me share my screen here and put up the PowerPoint. If I do this correctly, bear with me, it's my first time.
Look at that.
Okay, can everybody see the slide, intro slide?
Yes.
Okay. This will be an abbreviated presentation, given the format, Madam Mayor, members of council, that this is for Terra Alta in total. At this point, it comprises three parts that we'll go through in the presentation, but they are located off of Pollock Road and do come out to Berlin Station and Braumiller Road as well. Existing zoning on the property, zoning exists with a planned mixed use overlay for Terra Alta and for the Stockdale portions, and the portion in the middle known as the Rogers portion is zoned A1 agricultural, which is, as council is aware, our holding zone really for when development may occur on a piece of property. Very old photograph, we need to refer to it, but you can see lots of open land with farmland and also a lot of treat area. Also in here, you can see the first section of Terra Alta, which is under development now and where there are no proposed changes with this rezoning. Perhaps this helps to show you the layout that those of us that have been here for a while remember. Terra Alta in red on the north, the Rogers piece in the middle in green, and Stockdale Farms on the south side of this exhibit in blue. It is now all owned and being developed under one master developer, and that's known as Terra Alta. This, we just outlined the preliminary plan and plat in the same colors as the last slide, so you can see Terra Alta in red, Rogers in green, and Stockdale in blue, but you can see it all on one slide in one location and how it might fit together as well in terms of the plan. There are a number of sub areas proposed within this development. This is proposed as a master plan development, a planned mixed use overlay, where we have taken the text of Terra Alta and Stockdale, and we've added text for the Rogers piece. We've renumbered the sub areas, and we've keyed them to the text, and so here you just see a visual representation of that. There are a number of reserve areas and bike paths here, represented in red for the major bike paths. The green outlines are the reserve areas. In total, this is about four hundred and seventy-two acres, again, represented in twelve sub areas in the text. Eight hundred and seventy single-family dwelling units spaced among six hundred and fifty-seven single-family lots and two hundred and thirteen condominiums, patio homes, or duplexes depending upon the sub area. And there are about one hundred and eighty acres of open space. This really can be thought of as an open space subdivision in many respects, and there are several active play areas with pool houses and clubhouse, which have been added to this version of the plan, all tied together in terms of branding and marketing. Here is an illustration of the proposed pool and a large clubhouse area off of Terra Alta Drive. This would be in what is known as Sub Area Two. This was provided in the materials in your packet, council, but it also includes obviously some off-street parking. Stockdale Farms' plan really does not change from the last time council approved it in 2014. Turn my laser pointer on here, hopefully you can see this. The biggest change is to actually add an amenity of a clubhouse and a pool in this area of Stockdale. The Terra Alta and Rogers pieces are shown here. This is approximately the Rogers piece, which would include seventy-two dwelling units, all single-family lots, sixty-one lots in this location, more large lots by our standards at ninety foot wide, and then just the end of the cul-de-sac coming out of the Terra Alta subdivision here, which would include eleven lots. The rest of this would be in preserve. The Terra Alta portion of the development, again, does not change at all for Section One. For the other sections, there have been some adjustments to the condominium section to essentially have fewer condominiums to allow for this roadway configuration that you see in the upper-left portion of the slide or the northwestern portion of the site. These lots are proposed to be moved down empty nester lots that we've discussed before. The rest of the development includes condominium pieces and some open space pieces, as well as a mixture of different single-family lots and a lot of preserve areas primarily up the stream corridor, but also including other areas of the site as well. In total, actually, when you add the Terra Alta approvals and the Stockdale approvals to what is being proposed for Rogers, the total number of units is actually reduced somewhat over the approvals that you have made already, and that's due to the fact that some of the condominium units have had to come out in favor of single-family lots. And once again, you see outlined here in red, the Terra Alta portion, being green, the Rogers, and a blue, the Stockdale, all now to be known as the Terra Alta subdivision. We appreciate the Terra Alta developers working with us. Jim Owen is on the video conference and leading the effort for Romanelli and Hughes, and we appreciate him and Jeff Strung, who is with the engineer EMHNT. They have worked with my staff and engineering staff extensively over the last couple of months to pull the two texts together and add the Rogers piece and bring this really into one master plan development, which is a lot of technical work. There are really just a few changes in here. Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval. There were some comments at the commission meeting, mostly about Pollock Road and traffic, and it was more a conversation and discussion on how traffic is going to work in this area and how Pollock Road, the intent of the city has always been to maintain Pollock Road as a scenic road. A part of your actions earlier this evening to bring Glen Road up to Berlin Station Road are part of the traffic solutions in the bigger area here to allow traffic to go out in that direction. Staff recommends approval at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Dave from council? All right, then we'll ask the developers to turn on their microphone now. Do you have anything to add to this?
I don't believe so at this time. We'll answer any questions.
Okay. Does council have any questions for the developers at this time? Okay, let's go to Facebook and see if we have any comments there. Any public comments?
Mayor Riggle, we're still twenty seconds above or ahead of Facebook, so we do need to give it a little lapse.
Sure.
We have had some comments, but not through Facebook Messenger, is that correct? But one of the comments came from a John McDonald saying Delaware City schools are already above capacity and looking at state funding and budgetary issues. Do we need to continue to increase the population at such a dramatic rate? Mr. Rash, who had, I had read into the record earlier, has also commented saying that this is the stuff I was talking about in my email, we're looking at a long-term economic downtrend, downtrend, are more subdivisions really needed? I also received an email earlier, or excuse me, last week, which I had forwarded on to you from a Rick Konkaleski, and I apologize if I have the last name incorrect. If, I can read that into the record for you if you'd like, but-
Please.
His questions were, my questions are always about the increased traffic on Pollock. I know Delaware wants Pollock to be scenic, but I don't think it is a designated scenic route. Road improvements are going to be made to widen the road. Can't say the city wants to keep it like it is. We need to plan now and not wait to it to become a Lewis Center Road and with a thousand homes and a two-lane road. All new homes are paying an extra tax for development, et cetera. Let's prepare for the future, not wait for someone to get killed on Pollock or at the twenty-three intersection. Thanks, Rick Konkaleski.
Thank you. Dave, how many of these houses were, will be in Oland TNG and how many in city, city schools? Do you recall?
So the outline in red here of Terra Alta, which essentially council has already approved today, will be in the Delaware City School District, and the outlines in green and blue, Rogers and Stockdale would be in the Oland TNG District. Again, Stockdale is essentially what council's already approved today. Mayor, I don't have the total number of lots or units in each one broken down by school district. I can give you a rough estimate if, if you like.
Would the developer possibly have that answer?
Yeah, there's a total of four hundred and seventy-six units in Terra Alta, three hundred and forty-one of them are single-family, and a hundred and thirty-five are condos, and then the Rogers has seventy-two single-family and Stockdale has three hundred and twenty-two units, which two forty-four are single-family and seventy-eight are cluster homes.
Okay. And if I recall, a lot of these were being, some of these are already built and been sold to individual, I don't want to say older couples, because that's me. Some of these have already been sold, is that correct?
Yeah, the first section of Terra Alta is under construction now, and one of the things that we did, working with, with staff, was as we created this community, we did a lot of focus on the move-down empty nester buyer, and that's what you're going to see in that northern section. So we were able to get different market penetrations, which not only will serve, yes, will serve the single-family, but it also serves that move-down empty nester. As before, it was all, it was, for the most part, the single-family were all designed for two-story homes in the schools, and we've changed that drastically.
Okay, that's right.
Could help.
Yes, thank you.
This is Corey Hoffman. Perhaps the developer can comment about some of the concerns about, that some of our residents have. Well, what happens now with all this economic turmoil we're facing? You're unable to, is there, what's your gauge, like unable to sell homes or what have you in this development?
I think that, I mean, obviously, in any situation when there's extreme economic downturn, that would be the case for any subdivision. For this particular subdivision, this is, we're going zoning, and we're going to be doing it in phases. So we've already started the community, it's already underway, and we're just going to continue on with the community itself. And one of the things that I think is extremely helpful, especially in this community, is that we've taken it from really a two-product community to where I can now serve, I can serve your, your first time, I can serve your move-up buyer, I can serve your move-down empty nester buyer, I have a lot of different home sites and selections to hit different market penetrations. So I think it's an enhancement for the community itself.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Facebook, that need to be addressed?
Mayor Riggle, I have a comment. We're still learning this process, so please bear-
I understand.
From Don Marshat, and again, I apologize if I have the last name wrong. Are we planning to build on to the high school and middle school? We only have one of each for the entire city.
Wow.
Madam Mayor, if I could just comment, this is Dave.
Sure.
I think it's important and instructive to remember that the number of units here, with the exception of the Rogers piece, has been accounted for by both school districts in their planning for almost the fifteen years that these two developments have been through this process. And through the process, the number of units has gone down, as we remarked earlier, but both school districts do an outstanding job of working with us and trying to understand what might be in the development pipeline and planning for that. So these are not new, and they are not surprises to the school district. As a matter of fact, the Rogers piece has been in the city for quite some time, and we've done some estimations of the number of units that that property could have on it. This is, probably ends up being a little bit lower than those estimates.
Thank you, Dave.
Mayor Riggle, I have one other related to the schools, the development, from a Tiffany-Jo Hurt Green. Every time we approve a subdivision, we receive a new levy to pay for the schools. Why isn't the developer paying for these new schools?
I guess it's, this is Tom, I think that's just more of a statement. I can understand that. The school district, as Dave indicated, both school districts have accounted for these projects in their planning projections, and I think that's, that's really a question, it's a larger question about residential growth in general, but as Dave pointed out, this project's been in the planning stages for the last at least fifteen years, and it's now to the point where it's coming to fruition. The, to the extent that they're paying property taxes, the property owners, they are supporting the district, but as the applicant pointed out, a number of these units will not have the same pressure on the school districts as just typical single-family units, because it is a mixed development with the empty nester product. It's not all just single-family homes, but I guess I would just acknowledge the speaker, the person's comments, but there's really not, I don't really have a good answer for that.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else, Elaine?
Don't see anything new.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm looking here.
Okay, we'll give them another minute or so.
There seems to be more concerns about Delaware schools above capacity from John McDonald, which I think may have been already addressed. Delaware City schools are already above capacity and looking at state funding and budgetary issues. Do we need to continue to increase the population at such a dramatic rate? But I believe that was-
Jim, this is Tom, Jim Owen. What's the, the build-out of this project? Obviously, you can't anticipate the current downturn or how that might impact things, but you're taking a fairly long view of the, of the build-out, aren't you?
Yeah, I think we've, we've got it set up at a ten-year build-out. I certainly hope it's quicker than that, and like I said before, one of the things that we did to try to speed that process up is to appeal to more people in the community itself, and by having these pockets that we've created, if you remember the first plan versus what we've done now, we've created little pockets for, for different products. So I think from a model standpoint, it's going to be able to take us from two models to possibly four models, just in the Terra Alta section with different product offerings.
Thank you.
We have ten years on our list.
Thank you.
Elaine, do you have anything else? Admit yourself.
Sorry. I'm still looking. Currently, I don't see anything. There is questions that do not relate to this agenda item at this time, so we can address those later.
Okay. All righty. Then I will close the public hearing. And are there any more thoughts or questions from council or staff or the developer?
This is Tom, talking again. I guess I'd point out that, obviously, this project's been in the pipeline for quite some time. This most recent change, I think, as, as was pointed out in Dave's presentation, is a, is an improvement in the overall project, and this sector of our economy right now is still moving, and again, just in light of the current, the current situation, I'd say anything you can do to keep our local economy going. Obviously, we can't impact the, the bars and restaurants, but this is one in, one area of the economy that you do have some, some control over in a sense, in the sense of approval or not approval. So I just hope you kind of bear that in mind as you consider the project.
Thank you, Tom. I echo those comments completely. I just, I think right now Delaware's always been looking for housing, and it's nice to have these developers ready to go. It'd be, we'll just have to see what the economy does, but at least we'll be ready. So with that, I will look for a motion, if so wishes, by the council on ordinance number twenty dash ten.
Madam Mayor, just before I make a motion, I just wanted to bring out the fact that we may, under other circumstances, take this to a third reading, but given the fact that I think we pretty much plan not to meet in April, I don't see a reason to delay this six, four weeks into May. So with that being said, I'm going to move to suspend the rule requiring three readings on ordinance twenty dash ten.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
You're muted.
Sorry about that, yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move with the approval of ordinance twenty-dash-ten.
Second.
By Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance twenty-dash-eleven.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman? Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance twenty-dash-eleven.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Suspend the rule requiring three readings on ordinance twenty-dash-twelve.
Second.
Vice Mayor Schaefer, can we back up, Mayor Riggle, I did not get your vote for the twenty-dash-eleven.
I said yes.
Okay. Come through, just.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Ordinance number twenty-dash-twelve.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer? Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance twenty-dash-twelve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones. Sorry, motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion?
Um, I have a comment, Mayor Riggle, that I just want to make.
Okay.
So, this is Corey Hoffman, so one thing to think about is that, what's one thing that is for sure going to outlast this virus that we're battling and it's these homes? A home built in Terra Alta is going to outlast this virus. And this, while people are rightly concerned, uh, about, oh, should we do this now, I can understand where that's coming from, but this, us approving this and moving forward with this is, is putting the, uh, the plan in place to move forward after all of this is behind us.
I couldn't agree more, Corey, this, I'm just glad that the developers haven't put a halt to it, that they want to keep moving and have the faith in Delaware to know that we will get through this together. I don't know why Elaine's laughing, where are we at on this?
Honestly, don't know.
We approve twenty-dash-twelve.
I don't know, Elaine, when you got down there?
I have a, I have it that we did, but we can run the roll call again just to make sure.
Okay, I think we stopped it, Corey, but go ahead and do it again.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance twenty-dash-thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance twenty-dash-thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion before we do roll call? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman? Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger? Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. I again want to thank the Terra Alta team for moving forward.
Well, we, we thank you for the, for the meeting today.
Yeah, this, this is, uh, a meeting like this enables us to continue on the project and hopefully, um, if my engineer finishes up everything in a timely manner, we will be developing the next phase still this year, so, uh, this was a big deal for us, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item thirteen, which is the second reading of ordinance number twenty-dash-fourteen.
Ordinance number twenty-dash-fourteen and ordinance approving a combined preliminary and final development plan for Skilken Gold Real Estate Development for Sheets located at seven hundred Sunbury Road on Property Zone B-three, Community Business District and B-four General Business District on approximately four-point-six acres.
Thank you. Mr. Eflin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Again, I'm going to try to share my screen and put up the presentation, so bear with me. Everybody see the intro screen for Sheets?
Yes.
Okay. Get my laser pointer going here, should I need it? All right, uh, this is for a proposed Sheets development on four-point-six acres of property. That's located on Mill Run Crossing and, uh, State Route thirty-seven, US thirty-six. The property is in split zoning between B-four, which we don't have, uh, much of in the city, but does represent one of our, uh, most intense commercial districts and B-three. All of the buildings, the drive-through and the gas station are contained in the B-four district in which a gas station is a permitted use. This is an aerial photograph, should we need to refer to it. These are the, uh, existing developments, the old marina here and the property next to it. Uh, and you can see, um, the tree outline, there are some streams and, uh, secondary stream corridors in this area as well, which will be preserved. Here's a proposed site plan with the building, uh, facing US thirty-six. Uh, there, the fuel center canopy is running parallel to that road as well. There is a right-in, right-out proposed, as you saw in the aerial photograph, there are a couple of access points to these properties today. The proposed right-in, right-out is, uh, as far to the western property line as is practical. Obviously, the applicant has worked with us and our city engineers uh, with regard to that location and the restricted access movements here. The full access cut would come off of Mill Run Crossing across from the access cut for the existing shopping center. Uh, what you don't see on this diagram is the continuation of the start of a private baggage road in this location, you see half of it. Uh, with your approval tonight, we would work with the applicant and our engineers to ensure that Sheets installs the baggage road to their western property line in anticipation of the properties to the west continuing uh, that baggage road. Uh, there is, uh, sufficient room in there to do that. Uh, you can see there is a drive-through proposed for uh, Sheets as well, it's approximately a six thousand square foot facility uh, with forty-seven parking spaces, thirty-one of those are required, so they have more, uh, parking than is required. They're going through a, uh, transportation study with our engineering department and are well aware that any improvements, uh, that come out of that study or that may be otherwise required by our engineers, uh, that they'll need to do those and pay for those, uh, improvements. Uh, the applicant will also dedicate right-of-way and grade a future bike path along thirty-six, uh, thirty-seven. In part, uh, this is due to the point pro, the reason why they would put in the bike path uh, with their developments, because the point project will put in a bike path from the point all the way down through Mill Run Crossing. And at this point in time, uh, it might be highly likely that if they put in a section of bike path, that project might actually have to remove it and put it in, in just a slightly different location. And so that doesn't, uh, uh, make a ton of sense to anybody, uh, the right-of-way is needed and the grading is needed, uh, regardless, particularly the right-of-way. And so, uh, my responsibility to you, council and the community is to paint that through this process. Uh, also, in with that, say, my idea are, uh, some street trees that would be required along thirty-six. Again, there's no point in putting those in place and planting them with this project when, um, those improvements I just described might remove or slightly move those trees uh, to account for the needed infrastructure, and so there's a, uh, requirement for a payment in lieu of planting of those trees. Right now, we've calculated that to the best of our ability as approximately three trees uh, would, uh, be needed. And that's really to stay away from the sightlines of the right-in, right-out and from the intersection. However, uh, if you do the linear distance, uh, without doing that calculus, uh, seven trees would be needed. And so, when we get the final engineering and the final site plan, assuming you approve this, uh, we would work with the applicant to arrive at the appropriate fee in lieu of. Each street tree would be charged a hundred dollars a caliper inch and a minimum of one-point-seven-five caliper inches per tree per cone. The applicant is aware of that. Um, so to show you a little bit of the architecture, because this is a combined preliminary and final development plan. This is the north and east, uh, building elevations. Also contained within your packet and perhaps easier to see that on the screen. A brick building with, uh, Delaware Blue Vane Limestone on the tower element as well as on the Wayne's cutting. This is the south and west building elevations, you can see the drive-through here uh, as well as the, the back of the building, which, uh, really doesn't resemble much of the back of the building besides the access to the roof. Fuel canopy elevations, which are a little bit more modern than what we've had, uh, but fit with the, uh, applicant's guidelines for, uh, their business, also include the Delaware Blue Vane Limestone on some of the, uh, a portion of the supports for that canopy. There will be a ground sign, they have, uh, incorporated the diesel pricer signs on the very ends of these, uh, of the canopy elements and therefore they're, they'll be there, but they won't be particularly visible and the ground sign would be reserved for their name and, uh, the traditional gas pricer signs. Once again, your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval, as do we as staff. I would note during a planning commission hearing, uh, there were some questions raised from, primarily from adjoining property owners uh, over here, uh, concerning, uh, traffic, uh, and, and sort of the traffic pattern in the right-in, right-out or concern of whether someone could come out of the right out and go all the way across into the left lane and then, and then make a, you know, make a left from there. Uh, as well as concerns over, um, kind of just the Sheets project in general, uh, being located on that corner. Again, planning commission and staff do recommend approval at this time and we appreciate, and we have appreciated Frank Petrazella, who is on the video conference call, um, Skilken representing, uh, Sheets and, uh, also Sheets, uh, we appreciate their effort in regard to working with staff on the back of dr in this layout and the design of the building. They have done everything that staff has requested of them up to this point. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I had one question, this is, sorry.
That's okay.
This is, this is Drew. Um, and I know there's a kind of a dry, mostly dry stream bed that kind of runs behind the larger Glenwood Commons area, does that go anywhere near the, the back of the gas station too?
Uh, council member, that's a great question, um. You can still see the proposed site plans op, slide on the screen?
Yes.
Um, so I'll move my laser pointer, that stream you're talking about is approximately in this location. And there's a secondary stream here and this area of the site was actually put into conservation easement with that stream that you mentioned. And they are staying out of that conservation easement area with this proposal.
Any sunken tanks or anything like that shouldn't interfere with a leak where to happen or anything like that, that shouldn't move into that by any.
No, building, building codes today have many, uh, safeguards designed into them with respect to tanks in particular. Obviously, this will go through our buildings and inspections process as well as the state's process for underground tanks. Uh, and all of those safeguards and measures would be employed in this construction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by council members? Okay, um, can we hear from the developer at this time? Are they still on or no?
He's muted.
He's muted, hold on.
There you go. There you go.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Riggle, members of council, my name is Frank Petrazello. I'm the president of development for Skilken Gold. And very pleased to be part of this, uh, somewhat historic meeting tonight, uh, I, uh, I attended a virtual planning commission in New Albany last week. And I have to tell you, you guys got it down, uh, a lot better than that, but they were, they were the first, so, you know, we'll give them that. Anyway, uh, I have really nothing to add to David's very good, uh, presentation of the project, uh, other than, uh, Dave and his staff have been great. We agree and have no problems with all of the stipulations that are in the, uh, staff report. And, uh, are, and I'm here to answer any, uh, questions you may have.
Questions by council?
I, I would add, Carolyn, this is Tom, that, uh, we worked with Frank, uh, and his team on the, uh, Westfield Kroger project, uh, and I can't recall how many years ago that was, but that was a very successful project. Uh, and, uh, I've got confidence in their development team. I just, I, I guess I would ask Frank, just, uh, in, in terms of what's going on right now, they're still, uh, uh, they're still moving ahead.
Yes, we are, uh, uh, Tom, I, uh, one, it's good to hear your voice and to see you on video, we haven't talked in a long time, but, uh, we fully intend to move forward. We have a, a firm lease with, uh, Sheets to build this project and, uh, firm contract, uh, we are not fishing. We are clearly moving forward with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, you have a question?
Uh, just a comment, a few weeks back, I was driving by that old marine building there and said to my passenger, "It'd be really nice if something good would happen to that building." So, and right now, we've got a somewhat unsightly building that's not providing any value to the citizens or tax dollars to the schools or income tax to the city, so this is a really nicely done project, I think it's a big improvement over what we have there now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Elaine, do we have any comments on Facebook?
Um, I have, uh, this, Mr. Frisch on the phone, if you can give me a second?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm going to mute you so I can tell him to turn off his computer. We don't get feedback, hold on, please.
Elaine, unmute yourself because we can't hear you.
All right. I have Mr. Jim Frisch. I'm not sure if I have senior or junior on the phone.
Well, this is senior on the phone, but junior's here as well.
Okay. Can everybody hear him?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead. Mr. Frisch? Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and make, you can go ahead and state your name and, and your comment, please.
My name is James L. Frisch. I live at 202 Cotswold Drive in Delaware. And the concern I have, and one I presented to the planning commission, whenever it was, about a month ago, was that you're allowing a right-hand turn. And came up in that planning meeting that you were going to have a traffic study done, and I, I wonder if that has been done? And if not, who's going to do it? Who authorizes it? Who pays for it? And again, if it's not done, when will it be done? And I would think it would be a part of the consideration whether or not to allow that right-hand turn. The problem I see with it, and it wasn't addressed very much at the planning commission or it didn't, it was mentioned, but no one had any questions about it. But if a person is making a right-hand turn out of the western entrance now also exit, you would cross the shoulder, two lanes of traffic, a safe area that is designated by white stripes, and then into the left-hand turn lane. And considering that part of the responsibility of not only the planning commission and city council would require the safe flow to make it safe to move that traffic. And the planning commission, one of the planners, when I asked that question, said, "Well, we would leave it up to the common sense of the person driving the car, that he wouldn't attempt to cross that." And that, to me, isn't logical, and I can't imagine you allowing that right-hand turn Those are the comments that I have. My concern is the same that I presented to the planning mission, and I'm wondering if the council is going to discuss or consider that further. I appreciate the opportunity to make my comments public and be known, and, and I want to thank everyone for what has been a really neat experience, this evening, watching this from my recliner in the family room at my home with my family. So what could be better than that? And my son Jim says, he's shaking his head. He thinks his dad did an admirable job of presenting the concerns that we had. And again, I want to thank the planning commission people and the city council for allowing me to participate. Thanks again.
Thank you, Jim. I'm glad to know that your son approved. Dave, do you want to address these, these concerns? I think we said that the developer would do that traffic study as part of it. Is that...
That's correct. The developer conducts and pays for their own traffic study under the direction of our engineering staff, the requirements for traffic studies in the city of Delaware. And I believe that is, at least at the planning commission, that process is still ongoing. But the layout that you see here is what it has been. Was that feedback or somebody else on the line?
Mr. Frisch has his computer going at the same time I'm trying to take...
Okay. So this layout is consistent with those efforts to date.
Thank you, Dave. Do you think Jim heard that, Elaine?
Mr. Frisch, were you able to hear Dave, Mr. Eflin's response? I think I've lost him. I mean, he's there, but not, I think he's listening to the Facebook.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. So you heard the response? Okay.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So I guess my question would be, when is this going to happen? This, the planning commission brought this up, and one of the people there said it was then being done or whatever. It seemed like you wouldn't approve the final project without having that traffic study. So, you know, that's the concern that I have, and I guess I wonder why it hasn't been done and become a part of your consideration and your approval process.
Bill Farina is online now. Bill, do you want to respond to that?
There's Bill. We're not picking him up.
No. I can offer something?
Go ahead, Frank.
Oh, wait a minute. Maybe there's Bill.
I want to put a new question.
No?
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. I can tell you that the study is complete, save for the final coordination with the consultants on the point project. Carrie Fortman with Bill's office has been working with, with us to do that coordination. So that's all that's left. And as Ms. Fortman pointed out in the, in the planning commission meeting, that anything you see here is contingent upon she and the engineering staff approving that report and any, any modifications, if any, that are necessary. And we accept that and are perfectly prepared to go through that process.
He did.
Thank you, Frank. So did Mr. Frisch hear that?
I heard that, yes.
Any other questions or concerns, Mr. Frisch?
No. I'm wondering if there are any other members of the public that have questions or concerns.
Elaine, is anybody on Facebook?
I haven't received any emails other than from the Mr. Frisch, and then, and no comments currently.
Okay.
Through Messenger.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
I have another question.
Okay.
How was, how was the public notified of this meeting?
It has been posted on our Facebook page, I'm sorry, on our city website, has been shared several times to let people know.
It was also on Twitter. It was tweeted, and it's on our homepage.
Our homepage.
So is that what's normally done? My, I wouldn't think my neighbor Ed Powell, who's 84 years old, has a Facebook page or Twitter account or texts that on a regular basis. Is it also published in the Delaware Gazette?
Our meetings are, yes.
Yes.
This was not a public hearing, but the meetings are civic, civic meetings.
Anything else, Mr. Frisch?
No, that's, that's all that I have. And again, I want to thank everyone for allowing to express my concerns and views. Thanks again.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Does council have any other comments or questions on this?
Just one, Madam Mayor, if I could. I think Mr. Frisch brings up a good point, that somebody making a right turn out of there and trying to get all the way across to the left turn lane may not be a workable traffic situation. So I guess I'm asking Dave or, or Bill, once we take a look at that, do we have a way to modify that where they are not, either we post it or whatever, to not allow them to cross all three lanes of traffic? Is there something we can do to mitigate that?
Dave, you're going to have to talk because we can't hear Bill.
Can you hear me now?
I do, Bill. Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. I'm here. Technology. Yeah, the, the question regarding the right-in, right-out, certainly we understand the potential concern. It's, it's not the only place in town where we'd have a situation like that. We could always, if there's, if there's an accident in history or an issue with any intersection point or driveway point, we reserve the right to make changes to that in the future at some point. Understand the concern about someone may, maybe wanting to do that. Part of how we, part of how we design that right-in, right-out will help mitigate opportunity to do that. It's not, there's not a perfect situation in trying to control traffic. So we'll, we'll watch it. But it is fairly minimum access for a site on a corner with access pushed back. And I'll just echo the comments by David and also Frank, they have agreed to the reduced access. They, it was originally presented with, with more access. So we're fairly confident. In terms of traffic study, some of the real concerns we're looking at is left turn capacity from Mill Run back onto 36, and then the westbound left turn on 36, the south on Mill Run, because the site will either create traffic or attract traffic in those two movements. That's the, that's the major concern of the traffic study. That gives you a little bit of background of what we're looking at. But yes, like any access point, if it becomes a hazard, we as a community have the ability to look at that and make recommendations to change it.
Hey, Bill, this is Chris. If, so if I'm looking at this correctly, if I'm heading westbound, my only access into this is to turn left on Mill Run, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Bill, thank you for your comments. So if the right-out on 236, 37 there, or Sunbury Road, could we do some kind of warning that would say that they would have to stay in that far-right lane? I mean, is there any way to say that or...
Um, you know, it's not traditionally put signage in trying to control what movements traffic makes across multiple lanes. I'd have to speak with our traffic engineer to see. If there is something we could post to kind of give the warning, then yes, we would incorporate that with the project.
Well, this is, this is Chris again. I guess I'm a little confused, because if you go farther up 36, 37 there towards the highway, there with there's, there's Tim Hortons and there's Wendy's and McDonald's, you can't go across the, you can't pull out and go across the street. You have to go around because they have like this little yellow sticks. Isn't that something we could do there?
Well, right, in this particular case, I think the concern is you're so close to the intersection, but you do have the barricade, you do have the median island there already. But as you advance, maybe another 150, 200 feet further east, coming out of that right-in, right-out, you could try to jump all the way across into the left turn lane and go north on 521. I think that's the concern. And whether or not signage or common sense prevail there, we'll just have to watch that. And, you know, we, there was an active business there and additional active business next to it. I don't think we've had, that I know of, accident history of people doing that movement. Certainly, there'll probably be a higher traffic load in and out of a gas station. But again, it's not a, it's not something that we necessarily want to prohibit at this point, and it's something that we would monitor with PD, and again, reserve the ability to make changes if we had to.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I did get one comment from a Jim Plusted on Facebook Messenger. Would you like me to...
Please.
His comment would, was, what would the impact of this new business be on the potential refactoring of the point intersection?
Bill would be the...
And Bill?
Yeah, I'm still here. Actually, we're working with the developer on some of the, some of the, David mentioned earlier regarding the point. In terms of traffic, of the traffic study with the point considers this entire corridor down here and the existing and future commercial growth. We've looked at traffic out for 20 years in the point study. So any traffic generated from this would be included in, in the traffic as we look at the entire study corridor for the point. Specifically, there is a pedestrian pathway, multi-use trail included with the point project David referenced, and this project is making accommodations for that as well. But in terms of overall traffic, it's, it's incorporated into the future projections for traffic on the point project.
Thank you. Anyone else, Elaine?
No. No mayor.
Okay. And the developer is fully aware of the point and what's going on there and everything else? We made sure of that at the planning meeting.
We are very excited about the point. I have had to drive through that intersection, not as much as any of you, but certainly many times over the years. And I understand the concern, and we are pleased that it's being addressed.
Thank you. Okay. What is, if there's no further questions by Facebook, Messenger, or city council members?
Madam Mayor, I just, real quick, I'd let everybody know, let everybody know that I will abstain from these votes. The material that's specified on this project is represented by my company.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just would want to add, I think as with the Terra Alta, because we're going to have meetings in April, if council thinks this is a good project to go forward with, that we go ahead and try to get it tonight so we don't have to wait down the, push it back for their six weeks or what have you.
Thank you, Cory.
I would agree.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion, Cory?
Sure. I would move to, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so if somebody else wants...
Ordinance 2014.
I would like to move to suspend the rules requiring three read, three readings regarding ordinance 2013.
14.
14, 2014.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Hoffman, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Abstain.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for, to move for the approval of ordinance 20-14.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hoffman, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Stain.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries, and Frank, I'm so glad that you chose Delaware to do this project. We are excited about it, moving forward.
As are we. Thank you all for this perfectly electronic meeting. I appreciate it.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay, we'll move on to item 18, which is the finance director's report.
Mayor, council members, in your packet is the revised version of the monthly financial report for consideration. I just want... Mayor, council members, in your packet is the revised version of the monthly financial report for consideration. I just wanted to kind of give a summary of what happened in February. Income tax collections for the general fund, fire EMS and recreation were up 3.8%. In this report, we also have, outside of the general fund, we provide summaries on the fire, EMS income tax fund, and then the four enterprise utility funds. All the utility enterprise operations appear to be up in terms of revenue between 2% to 3%. And then at the back of the report, we have some cash flow statements for all of our funds that reconcile to the, the financial statement, just outlining where our city treasury is invested. As you look at this report, if there are modifications or additional funds that you'd like included, please let me know because this is a work in progress. Some other items of note, on Friday of last week, the Treasury Secretary announced that the filing deadline for 2019 taxes was extended to July 15th. That was a second update originally last week. They had the deadline scheduled for April 15th with payments owed by July 15th. That now is unified. We'll be working with lead to post updates on the city's website and on social media. Another item of note, if any customer does not pay their utility bill in the month of March, they will, there will be no utility shut off for water service due to this health emergency. Internally also, as some relief to customers for April, internally, we're discussing about extending the due date for the April bills to the last business day of the month. Right now, they'd be scheduled to be owed on April 15th, and we're working to get that changed. And that would be a permanent change where the bills would, going forward, be due on the last business day of the month. One last item, all of, all of the finance department staff primarily are working from home remotely. They do have access to the city network, and we are taking calls for utilities and income taxes. So we still encourage all the customers and residents to call for issues on utilities and income taxes, and our hours of operation are from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. Again, on, on what's going on with the economy, I, I've been talking to Tom about, you know, obvious revenue declines for income taxes, and then capacity fees for our utility systems. We likely won't be seeing those declines probably until late April and May. One in particular for the gas tax increase that was adopted by the state, the, the distribution of those monies to cities is usually two months behind. So we probably won't see declines in the gas tax receipts until early summer. So I, again, I, unfortunately, I don't really have any great updates. When we do month end close for March, I'll email council as to how revenue performed for income taxes, but we're definitely monitoring our cash flows and our budget. I don't know if.
Justin.
I don't know if council has any questions?
Questions from council?
Just to, I'm sorry, just to add on that, Carolyn, I, I think I, I mentioned in my communication Friday to council that we would be convening a meeting of the finance committee sometime in April, probably after April, towards the end of April, after we've had a chance to assess the first quarter and talk about our current financial situation and the budget gauge that I had shared with you on Friday.
Thank you. Justin, I, I just, I feel so bad for you. Just start here at the city and you get something like this dumped on you, so.
We'll, we'll be okay. I appreciate it.
And I appreciate with everybody trying to tighten their belts, and I just wish you had a crystal ball and you knew what the future held, but we'll get through this. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to city manager's report?
Just a couple of quick items. Council's been provided the situation report by Chief Donahue. Those are done daily. We're, we're holding daily briefings at 10:00 a.m., which the mayor is, is a part of. Those include the task force made up of our human resources director, our assistant city manager, our two chiefs, and myself, and we yoke them. We, that will be extended to all of our directors tomorrow to get reports from them on their staffing plans, which they're currently in the process of finalizing in light of the directive that we ordered last week in terms of remote, working from home remotely, and in light of the governor's order that goes into effect at midnight tonight. I can tell you that we're continuing our operations. Our, all of our directors are doing a great job of kind of managing through this, through this crisis. This is unprecedented, obviously, in the city's history in terms of the, the intensity of the, the emergency and what it's, how it's changing, how we work. Technology has made it much, much better, much easier to conduct business remotely, and obviously, that's helping greatly. I should say that our inspection department is continuing inspections. They're doing these remotely. I spoke with the planning director, Eflin, earlier today about that. It's worked, it's worked pretty well. We are not going into, we're not doing any existing home inspections. We're doing new home inspections as long as the protocol is followed regarding social distancing. So Director Eflin's staff is very much aware of that, and I think they're finding the contracting community cooperative. So we are continuing to do that. Code enforcement is on a as-needed basis. If complaints are called in, we will review those and then respond to them. So that's, that's moving along as well. And so that's, that's, that's good news. There was a, a question that Councilwoman Keller had earlier from one of her constituents regarding restrictions in our playgrounds in terms of not allowing those playgrounds to be utilized. All of those signs went up today. So if you hear from your constituents that folks are violating that, hopefully they're not. I think this is the honor system, obviously, but if you hear or see something, please let, let us know, and so we can let Chief Pidgenowski know to follow up on that. A letter went out earlier today. I think you were copied on to all the employees, just giving them an update of the current situation. We're continuing to monitor it, and obviously, our work, work patterns are changing in terms of a lot of us working, working remotely. So that's, that's what I had. The other, just real quickly, are the Cohatch lease. We've had a request from the, from the owner, Cohatch. I've not spoken to him personally, but I did get a message through, through Sean Hughes, our economic development director, regarding a consideration of perhaps on his lease payments. That's something that I've got to review with, with Darren and, and Sean, and I'll, I'll be providing you an update on that. But there has been a request that those either not be, they be deferred. There's no really provision in the lease agreement for that right now. I'll have to take, I'll be talking to the city attorney about that for more. But it's not surprising. Obviously, that's a, that's a business that relies on a lot of others who are, I, I don't think right now they're working out of, there's no coworking going on, so we're very limited coworking going on. So we'll be, we'll be providing you more information on that as I, as I receive it. And that, that is about it. I do have both, both chiefs are on the, on the line. If you had any questions of them, feel free to ask them, and obviously, any, any of me.
I'm also in our meetings. Those 10 o'clock updates, usually Sheila Huddiston from the health department, as well as Heidi Kegley, superintendent of the schools, have been able to give us updates, which is really good to know.
We're very, we're working very closely with all of them, and a great effort today with the school district assisting them with their, their meal program and our recycling bins. That worked out well. Yeah, you're, yes, that those, they're very, a big part of that.
Do any of the council members have any questions for either one of our chiefs at this time? Okay, Tom, is Sean, Lisa, do you have a question?
I did. I was trying to unmute myself. There was a question earlier on in the Facebook feed a long time ago, I think at the beginning of the meeting, about safety forces and numbers. And I know that our, both of our chiefs have plans in place to address issues with quarantines and potential workforce declines. And so I was hoping that maybe they could share some of that with the public to reassure them that we do have plans in place for that.
Thank you, council member Keller. Just to brief you, we, from a city standpoint, we have put together a plan for all departments based.
Can you talk a little bit louder?
Yes, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
So our staffing citywide has been based, looking at staffing being decreased by 10, 25, 50, and also 75%. Certainly, we're focused on the essential services of our city to ensure those continue to limit the impact on our citizens. From a fire and EMS standpoint, we have a county SOP that we will begin sharing resources. We've broken the county into four different quadrants, should that need be. One thing that we've really focused on is trying to get the message out, not to call EMS for these type of calls. Certainly, if it's an emergency situation, by all means, call us. But what we're doing to try to limit our exposure is send one person to the door, trying to get the person to come out, to maintain that six-foot physical distance from a patient as much as possible. So that's some of the things that we're working on to ensure that we're able to continue and limit our exposure from a fire and EMS standpoint. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Chief Pidgenowski.
Thanks, chief. I'd reiterate what Chief Donahue said. We have been working aggressively the past week and a half to two weeks just in planning to, to position ourselves, to have staffing throughout this issue, and also to keep as much of our staff healthy as possible. We have also worked across the county with all of our criminal justice partners to support and, and maintain some consistency in our operations across the county. And just tonight, you approved our mutual aid contract, which we already have the interstate mutual aid compact, but that's just another indication of how we work together. We have put that together for some of our mutual aid teams. But we are positioned well right now, and we are going to continue to provide the service we have always provided.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council on either one, from either one of the chiefs? Okay, I wondered if we could hear from Sean how the businesses are doing downtown. Sean Hughes, are you available?
We'd have to get him on, Carolyn. I can tell you Sean and Courtney are working very closely with, with Bob Lamb and coordinating the various resources that are available to businesses. One of the big, we spent a lot of time today and last night working through the list of essential services that were part of the order and trying to coordinate with, with our existing businesses to make, to ensure that, that the health department knows that those are essential. It, it turns out, I think most of them are. They fit into that category. Obviously, the smaller, the bars and restaurants, it's a different, it's a different matter altogether. But I think we've been, we've been working closely, as I said, with, with the county's economic development director on trying to provide as many of those resources. Depending on what, what Congress does here, hopefully in the next 24 hours, that's obviously going to be resources that will be available. We'll have to learn, we'll have to learn quickly about how that, how those resources will get disseminated out to, to our smaller businesses. We'll be utilizing the resources of the National League of Cities and some of the other organizations that were members of to, to hopefully learn more about that bill once it's, once it's passed.
Thank you, Tom. And Chief Pidgenowski, and I think also Public Works, I want to make sure to thank you for all of the curbside posts that you put for the restaurants who are doing the carryout. I've heard from some of them that that had really helped. So thank you for being creative and getting that done.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I have Sean Hughes on speakerphone. He was having trouble connecting into the meeting, so he's actually on speakerphone right now.
Okay. Good evening, Sean. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor Riggle. How are you?
Okay. We, I was just looking for an update on some of our businesses downtown and what you're hearing or what you're seeing out there.
Yeah, obviously, I think that the largest impact of this situation is on our small businesses. I, I, you know, I think our, our food-based businesses are trying to keep their heads above water, you know, with the carryout, delivery, drive-through concept. That's, that's been working about as best as we can expect, and I appreciate everything that our, our city employees have done to try to allow that to happen very easily for our residents. I think that's helped out a lot. Our retailers, obviously, with the order that was issued yesterday, or everyone's reception mode right now, they're completely shut down at 11:59 this evening. However, as, as Tom said earlier, Bob Lamb and I have worked with the health commissioner, and, and we're actually doing the, the determinations on what is essential, what is non-essential. I can tell you that under the, the order from the director of the health department, that manufacturing operations really are not impacted. They, they are, they themselves are electing to reduce their staffs and only have essential staff in place, but otherwise, they are manufacturing right now and will continue to do so unless they're told otherwise.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else have any questions for Sean? All right. We will move on to council comments. Mr. Jones?
I have none, Mayor.
Mrs. Keller?
Just a kudos to city staff and everyone who has worked so hard this week to keep the city functioning and many instances putting themselves in harm's way to make sure that everyone else is able to be safe. So that is very appreciated. Shout out to the city schools for the incredible job they're doing feeding kids, feeding families. I see kids walking around with the white bags of lunches. They've done an amazing job. Cohatch has also done lots of volunteer work in the community, doing deliveries and things like that. So I think we're going to be seeing lots more stories of incredible organizations doing great things in the community before this is over. So just excellent job, and thank you so much. Love this city.
Mr. Hoffman?
I would just say that I, I'm very impressed with everybody I see doing their best to comply with all these restrictions on us. It's not going to be forever. We can all just keep sacrificing. We'll get through it together. And if you're looking for something to do in your free time, I would encourage you to call your members of Congress because we all are going to need their help. We're going to need them all to step up and do something and get something done together to get through this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Farrell?
Just echo everyone else. It's been pretty amazing to see how people in town have pulled together and just, you know, for a walk, you see dozens of people that are all checking on each other, which is pretty cool. I do want to remind everyone as well that there are a number of resources online, both if you've lost employment, the state has a few things set up, as well as Main Street and a few other have put together restaurants and other businesses and ways to support them during this time.
Thank you. Mr. Hellinger?
Yeah, just a couple things. One, I'll put on my IT hat here and direct the question back to Susie. I see that she's on. From a standpoint of network security, information asset security, what have you, with this dispersment and work from home, obviously, this is a hacker's dream because it's a real greenfield opportunity to be able to get backdoor access to, into systems through home networks or, or other ways, even though you're connected via VPN or, or what have you. So I know this has all been addressed. I guess I'm just kind of looking for some assurance from Susie as to what's undertaken to this point to ensure that we don't become the next ransomware victim.
Oh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Echo.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me better now?
We're a little too close together, so she's going to come onto my camera.
Thank you for your question. We have been.
Um, thank you for your question. We have been, um, putting things in place to assure that we are secure um without giving out public knowledge what we've done. Um, we had, um, I can kind of tell you offline without, um, telling the whole public, but we are secure and we have done a lot of testing and a lot of setup, um, on the backend before this ever came to be. So um, we started a big project at the beginning of the year and, um, we had it almost completed. Um, and then coronavirus reared its ugly head. So over the last few weeks, we've been um making sure to put things in place to make sure that the city's secure. So we have done, um, some things and I'd be happy to share the information with you offline.
Excellent. Thank you, Susie. I appreciate that. And then, Tom, I had a question to you. I got an email from, um, constituent the other day. Um, just, I guess, looking for validation that the, uh, better words, our SafeWalks program and, and the enforcement of that would maybe take somewhat of a backseat again based on the current economic, uh, forecast.
Yes, that's correct, George, uh, and Bill can add to this. We had sent a first round of letters out not to the downtown property owners, but to the other property owners who were affected. We're following that up to let them know that at this point, uh, that will be put on hold, uh, as will the downtown project.
Thank you very much. And that's, that's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
I just a couple of compliments first to Elaine for putting this all together. I think this meeting went really well, much better than I expected it would tonight. And the Tom and staff, I think they've done a remarkable job of keeping up as the regulations have been ramped up and, and, you know, we're, we're getting everything done that we need to get done, but we're also feeding employees right in the process and the safety forces that are out there every day. I just appreciate everything that they're all doing. And just remind everybody to please go out of your way to support our downtown businesses by takeout, by gift cards. Let's do what we can to help them along. You know, they're always there for us. Let's be there for them.
Thank you. Well, I want to echo what everyone else has said. Our staff is just absolutely phenomenal. If I have to be quarantined, I wouldn't mind to be quarantined anywhere but here in Delaware. I feel safe here and I think we're taking all the precautions that we need to take. Um, I do want to remind everyone to fill out your census. You have plenty of time at home now to do so and we need to get our good fair share of that money because I think we're going to need it. Um, and with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
We are adjourned at eight fifty-five. Great job to all of you. Thank you.
Do well, everyone.
Thank you.